Just give out.
And Marv Banff.
We're not too bad.
Yeah.
Once you're done.
Minimize this. This break.
Where you go.
Are we ready? All right. Good evening, 22 Oakland, Detroit meeting of the Riley County Planning Board, Board of zoning appeals. Um. We have a public hearing, uh, information that I'll read to you because we've got some public hearings on the.
White page, white page. What?
There's.
I just got it. Oh, you have to read it if you have it. It's like, where did I look at?
The following applies meetings of Riley County Planning Board zoning field. Public comments shall be limited to no more than five minutes for each speaker. Time limit does not include questions asked by boardroom. The chair reserves the right to extend meeting speaker time should the situation warrant doing so. All comments should be directed at the board. All speakers must go up to the podium and make comments stating their full name and address before beginning. Public comments shall be made only during the designated time on the agenda at any public meeting. Public comments are out of order if made outside the designated time on the agenda of the of public meeting. Without the speaker having first been recognized by the chair. Remarks of individual speakers shall not be simply repetitive of identical comments made by prior speakers. Verbal or visual personal attacks on private citizens, staff, or board members shall not be allowed. Speakers who violate one or more of these rules will be asked to end their comments. And speakers or non-speakers who attend a meeting whose conduct disrupts the orderly and did not provide content of any public meeting at any time will be asked by the chair to leave such meeting.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
And. At this time, uh. We have a document for public comments for items that are not on the agenda. For anyone that's going to have to speak about something that is not on the agenda. Okay, who wants to go? And next, we have the consent agenda. I would, do they have any question, comments on the report fees and building permits in the minutes?
Go.
Interfere in motion.
So that we pass, pass. Want to get through those. All taken.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
Close. Okay. All right, um. At this time, uh. I have to do a motion, right, to adjourn, yes, I would give a motion to adjourn the joint meeting of the Riley County Planning Board, Board of zoning appeals. Every convene has the Riley County Board of zoning appeals.
Full move, second.
All right.
So the votes through.
Okay. And all in favor? All right. Um. Bob?
Hey. Good evening, folks. Randy Taylor has made application with Riley County Planning and Development requesting a variance to reduce the required front yard setback from twenty-five feet to seventeen feet for lots eighty-eight through ninety-three, block ten, in Lakeside Heights. Two-point-two acre subject site is generally located approximately thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-two feet south and east of Dana Dell Drive on the south side of Lakeside Drive, all in Sherman Township. The subject property was originally planted as lots eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, and ninety-three, block ten of Lakeside Heights subdivision in June of nineteen sixty-two. Building permit was issued in June of nineteen seventy-one for the residence as occupying the site shown here. The applicant removed the existing residence in order to build a new residence on the same foundation, same footprint. Uh, good idea, replacing the existing septic system or replating the aforementioned lots together into a single lot in order to eliminate the property lines and associated setbacks required by the sanitary code. But combining the aforementioned lots together will also meet the sanitary code in area requirement for a lot served by onsite septic system. Yeah, the subject property is currently zoned SF three, single-family residential, and has been zoned residential since nineteen fifty-eight. There are no special uses, conditional uses, or other variances associated with the site. Riley County Fire District number one will continue to serve the site in nearest county fire station is the University Park Fire Station currently located at seventy-four twelve Red Bud Drive in University Park. The subject site is located within five road miles of the fire station. Okay. This is the site plan showing the existing front yard setback in relation to the residence and relative to the proposed front yard setback. As the applicant is also requesting to replat all the lots shown here into a single lot, the requested variance will apply to all the existing lots and will convert to a single insistent front yard setback for the entire frontage of the new lot. That's, that's coming up after this one. Uh, as described in the staff's evaluation of the variance criteria, the majority of the subject's property is unbuildable as the Riley County Land Development Regulations prohibits building on slopes twenty-five percent or greater. This is the, uh, a, a shot showing the hill shade view in GIS. The property slopes southward away from Lakeside Drive at only twenty-five feet from the north property line. The site experiences a drastic drop in elevation. At forty-seven feet, the site experiences an extremely steep slope exceeding forty percent, creating only a narrow buildable area for the home or other structures severely limiting where buildings can go. Uh, this attribute extends the entire length of the subject site running Lakeside Drive. Uh, even with a limited buildable area, the circumstances for development or redevelopment in this case should also be evaluated when considering a reduction of a minimum front yard requirement that could result in the creation of a potential safety hazard for drivers along Lakeside Drive and or for those entering and exiting the subject property due to limited site distance. In this particular case, however, the residence occupied the subject site, uh, for several years without incident and appears to have satisfied the above concerns over time. More importantly, the, that portion of Lakeside Drive that fronts the subject property is relatively straight, flat, and without site obstructions for drivers on Lakeside Drive or those entering the, uh, from the site. Staff discussed the request with county engineer to, uh, address potential adverse impacts if the request were to be approved. Uh, the county engineer examined the possibility of site distance issues, future widening of the road, et cetera, and confirmed that the granny of the requested variance would not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare. Okay, a couple pics of the property, uh. What was at issue, quite frankly, at the very beginning of this is the front of the house that you see out extending, um, the front wall of the home, what met the twenty-five foot setback back when the original building permit was issued. And, uh, from some point between the time the building permit was issued and the, the cabin was built, uh, the previous owners had built on a front porch uh, into the twenty-five foot setback without a building permit and was in violation all that time. The new owner simply thought that it was in, it was okay, and decided to move forward and built in the same exact footprint and didn't realize it was in the twenty-five foot setback, like you see here. Also, uh, it would have helped if the applicant would have came in and talked to us and got a building permit for this, to do that. That would have been nice. So, uh, as it goes, this is the incomplete rebuild of the cabin. I noticed the foundation walkout basement is built into the hillside. It wraps around. Uh, this is standing east of the home looking west. This is a better view of the distance from the road and the front porch. This also illustrates the very limited buildable area of the subject site. Also, a new power pole was installed. There's that. Similar location and perspective, this shows the location of the home relative to Lakeside Drive. It also shows the rear of the home and the terracing and retaining wall for the back patio. This is a more of a close-up shot of the east elevation of the home. And walking around to the rear of the home, this is the terracing for the back patio, uh, which is evident here. It's also a walkout. So there's the walkout to this patio and this terrace also with a retaining wall shown here. The flat portion, believe I'm at that, yeah. We'll go back one, this flat portion along here is where your septic system is that serves the home. And that, of course, had to be engineered. Again, it, it extended a lot further, uh, west than what was expected, I believe, and crossed some property lines. Hence, the request to replat the property as well to come into compliance with the sanitary code. And then lastly here, this, uh, hopefully kind of shows the, the drop off here. Uh, it, it goes nearly vertical. And those are the tops of probably some thirty, forty-foot trees. So, staff recommends the Board of zoning appeals approve the request for a variance to reduce the required front yard setback from twenty-five feet to seventeen feet for lots eighty-eight through ninety-three in Lakeside Heights based on the evaluation of the criteria for approval listed in the staff report. Um, I, if there are any questions on staff's evaluation of the criteria, if you have any questions on the criteria, glad to, uh, field those for you. Other than that, though, this concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to field those.
Um, was the front porch covered previously under one of those, the older versions of the house?
Um, I didn't get a, a shot of it before it went away. So I, I can't, I can't say one way or another on that one. One thing I can say that it was actually built on, this is incorporated with the roof line.
Yeah, I was sure, I know, um, in previous chapters, if I worked, like, if the roof isn't on it, the concrete didn't necessarily count into the setback.
Oh, and this.
I wasn't sure how thick would be against that roof line.
Even if it was a deck, if it was a uncovered deck, if it was coming out into setback, that's a violation.
It's violation.
So it needs to be.
Correct. And then.
You sign in.
Does Riley County have signs when you enter the county that tell you that permits are required to subdivide or build? I know other counties do, and I can't recall if you have them or not.
I don't, I don't recall. I, I thought we had some signs that, that this is the county zone from its required.
Well, that's not happening on the time now, I've seen a lot of bikes and stuff here.
It should have gone up here.
The existing house was removed, the new construction was started, is it at this point now? Because even the pictures that we had didn't have windows, but now it was new and is it?
Yes.
Continuing the construction, still continuing even without variance?
Um, yeah, technically, um, uh. It probably should have stopped. But it is a matter of, uh, probably protecting an investment at that point from the elements to where it was needed to probably get closed up, so. Um, yeah, I don't have an answer for that.
I mean, it looks great now.
Yeah. Okay, last question for me. Um, is there any liability to the county by allowing a safety hazard? That would be my concern.
Allowing a safety hazard?
Yeah, knowingly approving a safety hazard is like, obviously, I mean, I was just curious if there's any liability by allowing a safety hazard if there's an accident there. I'm just asking for the county.
I don't think so. I think we're held harmless on this.
I'm just checking. By knowing, again.
It's a good legal question, though.
I guess.
Yeah.
All right. There were, would, five buildable lots. Then we, technically, there were five existing lots that could have been built on. We, and then they want to combine into one. All right.
Oh, yeah.
The old septic system was for wood size?
That, to serve that one cabinet.
Okay. And one they're building now was better newer and.
Right, so, uh, this is Lakeside Heights, which is right next to University Park. Only a few homes in Lakeside Heights are actually served by the central sewer there. And, uh, again, these, these lots are too small to accommodate, um, a septic system and well, because at this portion of Lakeside Heights, the central water doesn't come down, the raw water doesn't come down there. Um, and so it does not meet the sanitary code. And so it has to be onsite, so as far as your question, as far as buildable, um, sanitary code would not allow it, and, you know, individual, all these individual lots to be built on. So this is part of the reason why he needs to group those together. Another thing, in the sanitary code, you cannot extend, uh, part of your septic system across a boundary or property line. And even if you own the same lot. So that's why you can bring them together, eliminate the lots, and they come in compliance.
There's no chance then, this is all combined into one lot and give it a variance, they can then come back and apply for a second dwelling or apartment system or something on the combined lot?
Well, technically, the LDR, the land, or land development regulations allows for a secondary dwelling through a conditional use approval. But as you can see here, it's extremely difficult to get that worked out with the topography. It's unlikely.
That, that, if there were another building or dwelling built on the lot that was, uh, met all the requirements, it would still need its own separate septic system.
That's correct. Um, if we're talking about, uh, building on the same lot, or if you were talking about lot splitting it, splitting the lot to two. Right now, if we bring this together, now, this is, we're talking to variance at this point, we'll talk to the replat next round, but uh, it's all the same property, not someone, but I'll answer the question. Um, if, uh, this were to, uh, right now, if it were to be replatted into one, that will get you to a little over two acres. And so that's, that's the important part here, is, uh.
Issues on variance, right?
Well, the, the plot itself, uh, if it gets replatted, it'll meet the area requirements and the, the the distance requirements, the separation distance requirements, the sanitary code. Now, really, uh, since this is, uh, technically an existing home and things like that, you know, we, we go off of setbacks only, not the area requirements, but since he's crossing the line to do it, we're, we're going to have to use the replat to bring it together. So, it's a little complicated.
Um, on the variance, is it possible to have a condition on a variance, or is it yes or no?
I think you can.
Could you say that any future structures built on the lot would abide by the twenty-five foot setback as part of allowing this variance for all the lots? Or how would that?
Well, it's, well, the reason why we were doing it for all the lots is, is so it would be the seventeen-foot right across. The reason why is because, yeah, you could do that, and if he needed to come back in, he would need variance to build a garage. Absolutely. There's. No, it, there's, it drops off. So this is in order to save time and board and all this, if he were to want to build a, an accessory structure. The way we're looking at it, if the safety concerns are met with this, with the house at seventeen feet, then it would be with a garage. Uh, understand this, people feel, think that the, the back of the garage, the opening of the garage butts up against the road bed. There's still quite a bit of road right-of-way between the road bed and the front of that garage. For someone to back out and see people coming, have the people who are on the road see someone backing out. So, as long as it's obstruction free, if you're on a curve, it, it can be a little bit more dicey.
That's true. All of it is. Needs the set of heat, but.
Yeah, it, it literally drops off about the same side, so.
Yeah.
The whole, uh, variance for that one lot.
Right. Yeah.
The perkiness here is that we have a variance for the setback, and we also need to replat it, but it has to go to, to the two different boards, we can't hear the
Yeah.
the, at the same time. And it's kind of, I'm answering questions on the next petition.
Yep, okay. Any other question, Tom? Um. I have.
When it's approved.
Well, now we have to do the public hearing. I have that one, you're always on it. Um, are there any proponents within a thousand feet that would like to speak? Any opponents within a thousand feet that would like to speak? All righty then. I would give a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Sure, sorry. Who said? Eric? I, I'd give you a little bit of that. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Anybody, any deliberation of things regarding discussed?
I'm sure it's not really, pretty much.
Yeah.
You don't do it from, around like the Allison building.
Yeah. All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
It's approved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Next, we, a motion to adjourn the Riley County Board of zoning appeals and reconvene as the Riley County Planning Board can sign with the paper before we start.
Same as.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Um. Technically, open the public hearing.
Wait, dummy. By the way, it's. Once again, good evening, folks. Uh. And just a reminder, this is on behalf of North County Real Estate LLC. Randy Taylor has made application with Riley County Planning and Development requesting approval to replat lots eighty-eight through ninety-three, block ten, Lakeside Heights into a single lot. And you know, the subject site is generally located approximately thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-two feet south and east of Dana Dell Drive on the south side of Lakeside Drive. Um, you know the history. And, uh, the subject property is, in its entirety, is zoned SF three, single-family residential. Again, I want to remind board that there are no variances, conditional uses, or special uses associated with the site, except for one variance through the CEB. Uh, the Riley County Fire District will continue to serve the site near its kind of fire station, the University Park Fire Station in University Park. So this is the final plat. What you see here is being vacated, uh, those are the lot lines. Those, uh, by register deeds requires to have a note on it that that is being vacated with this lot, or this replat, excuse me. What you see in the gray, those are, uh, the utility easements. Those are to remain. There's really no point in trying to vacate those. Okay, I don't think it would give, uh, the property owners, uh, any, uh, benefit. Um, and I, I have possessed mouse, again, looking at the property. Same pics. Same orientation. Stretching across, again, the biggest reason for the replat here is, uh, for the sanitary. And that actually wraps around this and to going off to the west. And there's the elevation. Extreme. So, uh, most of the information is in your staff report regarding this. Um, staff recommends that the planning board approve the final plat of Lakeside Heights Unit Eight as it has been determined that it meets the minimum requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations and the sanitary code. If you have any questions on the replat, glad to help you out.
Do they have any pro? Proponents within a thousand feet that would like to speak? Any opponents within a thousand feet that want to speak? All right, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, sorry.
All in favor?
All right.
Any discussions to be discussed? We've already. All right, anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the request for a five, eight, three, block ten, Lakeside Heights, twisting block.
All in favor? One more.
Okay, uh, one, uh, announcement I need to make, the Board of County Commissioners will hear the same request, uh, here in these chambers, October thirtieth at nine twenty AM. Uh, we do have a Mylar over by the printer. I don't forget to sign that on the way out, thank you, appreciate it.
Um, next, we have, uh, pleasure, open the public hearing for section five point two.
All right, I'll give a quick, a quick staff report before we get going to this conference. Um, so there's three items. Y'all remember, you've been workshopping this for a while. We started, um, with workshops with the county commissioners earlier in the year. Um, and this was all kind of initiated by the county councilors after conversations they had at KAC with several um, other county, counties in, um, in Kansas. So there are three amendments that we've workshopped and we've worked through and language that we draft, language that we've settled on, that is, um, part of your public hearing tonight. Um, so I'll go through those three things, mostly, of course, you folks are all aware of it, that for the benefit of the folks in the room, and then I also want to talk a little bit about, about how it's all going to apply. Um, because that's probably some questions that folks might have as well, so. Um, so, just kind of going along with the staff report here. Um, one of the things the commissioners wanted to look at was adding a separation distance or a setback between um, properties containing short-term rental units. If you remember, we originally started with properties and we've whittled it down to units, that made more sense. That was a little less restrictive, still allowed some flexibility, but still had that setback. What we, what we landed on was five hundred feet between a short, between short-term rental units, basically. And that could be your full house, that could be a structure containing just one bedroom, that could be your accessory dwelling, however, um, it's set up, it would be the five hundred feet between those units. Um. The other thing that we talked about as we went through that was we have at least one situation right now off, off my head, and we looked at this where there's two existing short-term rental units within five hundred feet of each other, but they access off of completely different roads. If you remember, the main reason behind adding a separation distance was the hope to mitigate um, additional traffic and additional, um, parking issues. Um, so, what we talked about, if they're accessing off completely different roads, that's not really the issue at hand, if you will. So what you folks and what, um, the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board was comfortable with, that we've put in here, is that, um, department staff shall have, um, the ability to review the special circumstances for each, uh, each application. And if we're seeing, well, yeah, they're within five hundred feet of each other, but they're accessing off completely different roads, it's not going to have that impact. We can, um, waive that requirement. So basically, what we talked about is just allowing staff to have that ability to review and consider the facts per specific, uh, property. So, that's what we have here. Um, I want to talk really quick about how the five hundred feet is going to work. I want to talk really quick about how the five hundred feet is going to work. So. If you have an existing, and there's several in the county where we have ones that are within five hundred feet of each other, they can remain, provided the renewal license, renewal license. Like I'm saying that wrong, is done within twelve, within twelve months. If my license expires October thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, I have until October thirty-one, twenty twenty-six to renew my license to remain within five hundred feet of another unit. If I do not renew my license within that year, I will, as long as there's another unit within five hundred feet, I will no longer be able to have. I will no longer be able to renew or have a license in my unit. So. We're allowing that twelve months, which is standard language of non-conformance. So we're allowing that twelve months for folks to just continue to renew their license. And remain even though they might be within five hundred feet currently of another unit. So. Brand new licenses, and again, those that have exceeded the year renewal will have to meet that five hundred feet. If I come in and I want to apply for a short-term rental unit on my property, but staff takes a look and within five hundred feet, there's another one, we will not be able to issue that license. So that is how that will work. So existing ones will not be penalized, provided they renew their license accordingly. We will look at that with new ones. Any questions on that? Any clarification? Okay.
Pretty busy, Scott. I don't know.
Hi. The next one is. Has to has to do with. Properties being current on all associated taxes and fees. This came from, just a reminder, this came from Public Works. We have at least one short-term rental unit that was that could be late with their sewer bill. So what Public Works asked if we could put this provision in to ensure before we would issue a new or renewal license. That the property is current on all any fees they might owe the county and their taxes as well. So. And then last one, last amendment being proposed has to do with the responsible agent. Right now, we do require a responsible agent, and that can be the property owner, or that can be somebody they designate. The language that we have in the code right now, the agent has to be available twenty-four seven, and this is responding to emergencies. I think it was this group we talked about. Or it might have been the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board, but they talked about, well, if somebody just can't find a towel. Does the responsible agent need to to show up at the door? This is about emergencies. This is about, you know, if the police are called or if something is happening that warrants that property or that responsible agent to be on site. That's what we're talking about here. And so what we did was basically we. After a lot of conversation with you folks, and again, the other planning board, what we landed on was defining what affirmatively respond within one hour means. Right now, in our current code, it doesn't say in person, doesn't say a phone call, doesn't say a text. It just says respond affirmatively within one hour. We didn't know what that means. So conversation again amongst the boards, we decided to include respond in person within one hour. So that's what the amended language is. So. So that is all of the proposed amendments we have with just a little bit of information on where it came from and how it will apply. Do you folks have any questions? Okay.
I only have one question. Is notification fine? I didn't get a look right into. In the in the. Regulations, like how are they notified? Is it?
How oh, how are how are the responsible agent notified?
Yeah, is that defined in the?
It's not, actually.
But like, I've sent me along Friday, I mean, not notice till Sunday.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, so that might be something we'll need to.
That was the only thing I thought.
Consider.
It's to have you define notification.
Yeah, how do we, yeah, notify the the responsible agent? Yes. Any other questions or comments before we open the? Hear from folks?
Okay. So I now. Look at proponents of the. Jason's correct. Proponents go first. There are none. Opponents. All of us. Are we the opponents or proponents?
Well, we're four of them.
Your fourth amendment. Okay, there's your proponents. So you can individually come to the. Front and say your what name, address, anything else you want.
Exactly.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Butler. I live at the end of the street, Deer Run. Six nine two two is my address. I get to watch people come and go every time they go to a B and B at the end of my block. And I moved out in the country to have some solace. In my retirement age. And I found a whole bunch of neighbors that were wonderful people. And then we had new investor types move in. Or change to that and move out. Because we're simply located near a lake. Called Tuttle Creek. That lake is being advertised as an adventure spot. On the web by these individuals advertising almost resort-like accommodations on our block. Well, our block is a dead-end street. At the end of that street is a cul-de-sac. Which never completely got formed. Because of the way life has gone. Just as the. Issue you just handled. There are many houses that were built before the setback was clear. There are many houses that were built before the septic rigs were adopted. We live in a situation that is going to become untenable. For people who wish to live in Riley County. Namely retirees who moved here for that purpose. We didn't move into the middle of a commercial. Zone. We didn't move to town. We moved ten miles out in the country. And at the time. It seemed like the best thing we could possibly do in life was to invest our money there for peace, for quiet. And. I'm not a proponent of B and Bs. Or VRBOs. I was corporate director of marketing for Hilton Hotel Corporation. For twenty years. And we had to pay licensure, taxes, we had to have security, we had to have lighting, we had to have parking, we had to have insurance. Millions and millions of dollars worth of insurance to cover people coming on our property. And their guests. With several houses being a B and B. You find that there's a resort-like atmosphere in the mind of the renters. And the rest of the houses aren't resorts. And it causes a problem. It causes a problem called anxiety. It causes a problem called traffic. It tears up our road. It stops our neighbors from parking in their own front yard. We have had cars. For a mile. Down the road. We have had people show up with bundles of firewood they just bought at the grocery store. And set a dish out on a wooden deck. And light a fire that went above the eaves of the house. And these are renters. Where is the owner? Some seventy miles away. Possibly. Fifty miles away. So having management on site. Of these properties. Is one thing I would highly advocate you think about. I know it's possibly not the issue. That we're discussing right now, but it is the issue. The issue is, are we going to allow businesses? To come and legally take over private neighborhoods? Where there is one way in, one way out. And for every person that rents it, seven cars come. To look at it. First. Then when it's rented. Seven show up when two said they were going to occupy. And then there's a party all damn night. And our county and the people that we elect. In this county. Need to represent us. Us, the property owners. That bought a home here to live here, to raise a family here, and to invest our money in this community. We're not a fast buck kind of person. We're not trying to flip something over and make big dough. We're trying to have a life. And we would beg. That you consider what I've said. In your thinking about this problem and all other problems that are going to be out in this area that you're looking at. Including ours. Thank you.
No, I run. Thank you. And I was like. I was like.
Good evening.
Five minutes. I'm sorry, I didn't think to ask. I saw your phone though. Okay.
I won't take much time.
You're okay, Dennis.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Dennis Egan. I live at seventy nineteen Deer Run Drive. I'm a neighbor of Mr. Butler's. We have the majority of our property owners present this evening. Because as Steve has mentioned. There is an issue with the nightly rental business being brought into our residential area. We have one licensed nightly rental at this time. We have another within, I'll guess, three hundred feet. That is operating unlicensed. As far as I know, we have not received notification that that license has been issued. And we actually have the potential of a third. We have eight or nine properties on our little road. And by allowing commercial ventures to go into such a condensed area. It truly changes the character. Steve has made the point that we move there for. Privacy, relaxation, and a family atmosphere. This needs to be considered as you form regulations. Are we changing the character of the neighborhood? Steve has addressed traffic. Parking is truly an issue. I would question fire safety in our existing cul-de-sac. I don't think you could get a one ton to turn around on a weekend. Because of existing situations, our present nightly rental doesn't have adequate parking, so they must park in the right of way. Both my wife and I are self-employed, and I truly feel. Conflicted. Asking government to try to regulate how a person uses their property. I've got a problem with with both sides, but I think in our situation, it would be prudent for this board to consider our thoughts as you make your decision on this. I'm not against nightly rentals. People can do what they want, but we, the density and the five hundred foot that you're proposing would certainly help on that. Thank you for your time and thank you for volunteering for this board.
Hi, I'm Dennis's wife Cindy. We moved out there nine years ago, and it was not a VRBO right next to our house, right out the front door. And the cul-de-sac is right there. And we had, our house was grandfathered in, so we are, we we look out at the cul-de-sac. And we are in the right of way a long time ago, but I mean, what can you do? The house was built quite a while ago. So we see all the comings and goings, and though we've met really good. People tried to make the best of it eight and a half years ago when they started it about six months after we. After we went out there and started building and fixing up and making our, building a garage and putting our life down because it's a cul-de-sac. What could go wrong on a tiny cul-de-sac? You got six neighbors that live out there. And one, one that lives out there sometime and another one that was for sale and then a nice little family and. They have run off and their house got built, and that's the one that's, we're afraid will turn into a VRBO. Then there's the one right across the street that we, so we see, we see both of them out our front window and our side windows, both VRBOs and the like is in front of us. And sometimes. We don't see that because they've got their toy haulers or their, you know, horse trucks or their boats or and their cars. And then the other one that has the horseshoe driveway, excellent idea. But it's very, very steep, like a great big skateboard bowl. So they will end up. When one of them needs to leave, it's it's literally, I've been in the house so many times, it barely sleeps four and it's advertised as sleeping seven. So all seven cars come out, and when it's time for one of them to go, it's like a circus. So they all go up because they can't back up. Most of them don't have four-wheel drive. So they all come out, they all flash their lights through our house, and then they all go back in. And then they have their friends come over. And what last year, we couldn't even, there were, like Steve said, all the way up the street. They blocked us into our garage, and I needed to get to town, and the party was so big on the deck that it could have collapsed. We've talked to the owner. We tried to make the best of it. We tried to be peaceful and get along with everybody. And after. How many years do you have to put up with that before you only see it get it worse, not better? And now we've got two and maybe three. And it makes neighbors want to leave. So we lost the young family, and it's just. You know, it's, it's only a sign of what's happening. To people, and we have strong neighbors, and it's, it's, we're trying, but it's really hard. And so. You don't know it until you experience it and and you you can try to have a good attitude and it's just. You just hit burnout because it's like Steve said, it's people on vacation, they're not thinking like reality, and the headlights shine right into our bedroom. We've had people, we've had VRBOs, guests up on our deck at two AM knocking at the front door twice. We've screamed in our, in our, we've got cameras. If you need any video footage of anything, I've got it all filed away and saved. We've had to holler at them to please not come up, and they just come up anyway. We've had people leave our dog gate fence open. We've had them park just crazy, you know, and it's just, it's nice when you just can go out and go, hey, could you at least park so you're parking your headlights at your guest house instead of at our house? And they're like, oh, God, I didn't think of that, you know, so most of the people are nice, but it gets really annoying. And then it's scary. You don't know this day and age what you're getting out there. There's just. A lot of people are just. You never know. So thanks for listening.
Karen's recording.
Yeah.
This VRBO neighbor. Are the owners absentee?
Oh. Away. Man, I just, you have to go back up there, Steve, and I reported, sorry. You have to be able to hear me.
Okay. Oh, you can hear me from anywhere.
So I was like, oh.
We know him. We have. He's actually a fraternity brother of my husband's, a younger one. We have tried and tried to communicate, and all he says is he's sorry, there's not much he can do, and he's trying. And then the other guy that just bought the house and he has five kids, and it's the little two-bedroom. He said, well, we just got it so we could come down here and spend time. I was like, five kids? And he was like, well, you know, and then later on, we find out after they closed the real estate agent let it leak. That, hey, if we wanted to have like our family members come stay there, they're probably going to turn it into a VRBO. He never told us about it. Oops.
Sorry. Why you don't want me to?
So anyway. I think they're well-meaning people, but it's just, VRBOs are great, but this isn't the right street for it. In fact, I wish we had zero and we deserve to have zero. It's just, there's no parking. If you come out and look, please come look. There's no parking. The UPS guy can't turn around. The FedEx guy can barely turn around. I have a forerunner. I have to be careful, and I'm still swinging around going, God, you just can't turn around in there. And that's where everybody. And that's where everybody parks. And then there's one spot for the guy, the Kwapanowski, sorry if I said, not supposed to say names, but he has one parking space. It's, it was zoned wrong unfortunately, a long time ago. It was okay that the plots and everything back in the fifties, everybody's like, oh yeah, drive on my land. It's fine, you know, but they didn't have VRBOs back then. So it's just different now. And our street is not like anybody else's that you'll ever meet. And that's like, I think that's why we all want to stay out there is because we love it and it needs to stay that way. There is free, it says that it's free and you can't walk to the lake from there. You just, so it's misrepresented on both cases. It just, it just makes you just want to cry and scream. And then meanwhile, they come again and you're just like, here we go, here are the guests and the cops. And it's all year round. This man happened. The first man happy, you must say, right? So everybody loves to be here.
I'm just sending you all still to break gas, okay?
Hello, I'm Ron Greve. I live on Deer Run. I'm at seven zero one one Deer Run. We've been out there since nineteen ninety-seven. Yeah, real nice friendly little community. And I'm on just not reiterate a lot of what they said, but I want to emphasize it's all about logistics of the size of the property and the size of the road. When you have two car passes on Deer Run, we each have to really kind of get off the side. You can't pass two cars. It's just one point five lanes of gravel road. I mean, there's just not much there. So at the end where the cul-de-sac or the turnaround is, with a regular pickup truck and trailer, you can scurry around and actually make a turnaround if nobody's parked there. But if one vehicle is parked in that cul-de-sac, which they have nowhere else to park, you can park a compact car at the short-term rental. You can park a compact truck, car at the other short-term round, but as soon as you get into these big four-wheel drive monster pickup trucks, they can't park where they're supposed to park. They have to park on the middle of the road basically. And so as a neighbor halfway down, I have to kind of pre-plan or disconnect my trailer or whatever I got going on that day and twist it around and because I can't drive to the road and turn around like I normally do because well, on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it's all occupied by a bunch of people parking that we don't know. Obviously with short-term rental folks, a lot of them are nice folks, but you do get in some people that are not so polite, so they do zoom down the itty-bitty road that's only less than eight mile long. I had a situation just a week ago, you know, I was hopping in the car, my wife got the car out, we were about ready to go. And the guy decided to somehow squeeze between our car that was in the road as I'm getting in and my trailer. Give us two seconds. We were about ready. Somehow we didn't scrape paint, but, but these are the people we have to deal with on a, on a almost every weekend basis. They don't really care about us as neighbors. They just want to have their short-term rental, pay their two, three hundred bucks a night and do their thing and they take over the place with all their multiple vehicles and trailers and toys. And I get it, I have toys too, but I also have a place to park them. I don't park in the middle of the road with my toys. They are. They're taking up our road with their toys on the weekend and it's creating a safety and hazard. Now, obviously, this is on prevent. The second, third, fourth, we think there could be, if this wasn't passed, if this doesn't pass, we could, within a few years, up to four VRBOs, short-term rentals on just Deer Run. We've already talked to some of our neighbors. So that, that's probably going to happen if this doesn't happen. So hopefully you guys will, will pass this. That'll be awesome. Step in the right direction. We don't know what to do about the one that causes all the problem right now, but hey, one's better than four. So thank you for your time.
My name is Tom Wertz. I live at seventy twenty-five Deer Run. I'm smack dab in the middle between these two. I hope you pass this because this rental has made my life a living hell. It's put me in the hospital. I had sixty-five thousand dollars worth of medical bills because of the constant trespassing on my property. It never ends, every weekend. And as these folks have all told you, people come in there, they have a tourist mentality, think this is a big resort. They can do anything that they want. I have had to call the police at least a hundred and seventy times for people trespassing on my property. This is outrageous and I can't believe we even have to go through this. I don't know what to say. These, this should never have been allowed in the first place. If you go out there and you look at the situation, what they have all described, that's exactly the way it is. I'm stuck in the middle. I've got them on either side of me. They park on my property every time they come. I have to call the police just about every weekend. And they bring their dogs. I've had people drunk and partying on my concrete pad. And I've had people from out of town, never been to the state, come and argue with me. I've had my property surveyed. I know exactly where the lines are. But these people come and argue with me. That couldn't possibly be your property. Please pass this. You've, this has made our neighborhood a living hell. It really has. Thank you.
Not to mention the particles. We forgot the particles. The road is worn out and signage. No, I'm just saying, we'd like to catch it on the audio recording.
I did everything that the board asked me to do. I put up all the signage. People ignore the signs. They don't care. It means nothing. I've had, what part of no trespassing, don't you understand? I've got two of those signs. They don't care. They ignore them. You wouldn't believe what we've been through out there. He said, this has put me in the hospital. I have a shame now. From the constant having to call and deal with people and tell them, please get off of my property. That's all I want. Just please stay with my property. I've been out there over thirty years.
So my name is Robert Wooldrick and I live at seven thousand three Deer Run. And we moved in there in August of twenty-one. And so I've kind of watched all this stuff go on and the drama down at the end of the street. And like I say, it's not a cul-de-sac. It's a dead-end road with just a little bit of stuff and I'm, I've never met Tom. That's Tom, right? But there's stuff constantly going on down there. His, it, it ends up right at his place. His driveway is the same as the parking for the, the rental. And then now I guess we have that, another house that just got turned over, but I guess they don't have a license to do it anyway. So you guys have one vacation rental documented and then there's another one going. There's a house across the street from me. She's not talking too much, but we know she's going to end up going the same way. And I've got neighbors across from her. They're already talking. They've got some vacation rentals. And I'm all for the vacation rental. I was kind of thinking maybe that would be something I'd want to do later, but you know, it sounds like it's just, you know, it's a big deal. And I guess the thing I see is the parking. I've got a lot of parking, lady across the street's got a lot of parking, but down at the end of the block, there is, there's no parking. There's literally, I mean, if we pulled up a map, we'd be able to see where the cul-de-sac is supposed to be. And I think it's in your guys' property down there. So it's kind of a weird deal. So and we got dirt roads and so you hear people saying potholes. You know, it gets graded and that's okay. And it's good for a little while, but then when these, you know, there's our traffic too, but we're not coming down the road hard. We cruise in nice and slow. And that's it. So.
Hi there, I'm Mark Rose. I own the short-term rental at thirty-three twenty-five Valley Dale, so not near anywhere any of these people lives. And, and hearing about that, I, I feel for them. And I'm pretty familiar with the, the short-term rental rules and we're supposed to have, I think it's one parking space per bedroom. And I'm, and I'm all for if you have somebody who is constantly violating those rules, that there get to be stiffer and stiffer penalties to address that issue. And, and I'm saying this as someone that owns short-term rentals in three different counties in two different states. I, I think the, the traffic and having a short-term rental next to you in most cases is better than a long-term rental. Because if you get a really bad tenant, they're only there for two days and then they leave. If you have a long-term rental and you have a bad tenant, you're stuck with them for a year. Short-term rental rules already have quiet hours at ten o'clock. So again, that's one of those things that if that's a, a constant violation, but I think that there's something that should be addressed about that. With the five hundred foot rule, my question would be to think about apartment complexes. If somebody wanted to have a short-term rental in, you know, two of them in one apartment complex. Or if somebody has duplexes and they want to have a short-term rental on both sides of the duplex, even though they're maybe deeded separately. I think that's something to, to think about and make sure that we're allowing for stuff like that in those rules that you make. I, I can tell you as a short-term rental owner, I don't want parties at my house. You know, I want people that show up and go visit their grandkids and go home. And the place that I took over, that we bought was a long-term rental. And all my neighbors are much happier now because we take much better care of it than that long-term rental owner did. And if I said his name, you guys all know it. It's a big foreclosure sale. The other thing that I, the question that I have is, what are the expectations of that short-term rental owner? If you're going to be able to call them at any time of day or night, twenty-four hours a day, what are you calling them about? And do you have those same expectations of a long-term rental owner or a property owner that has this as their second home? And then think about, have you guys talked to or gotten reports from RCPD? And compared, how many times do RCPD get called to short-term rentals versus long-term rentals versus you know, owner occupied properties? And what is, what do those numbers look like and does that justify that rule? What are the rules for hotel owners? I looked in the state and there are no requirements for hotel owners to be there at any time. I think most hotel owners are there because it's just a different setup, but there aren't any state requirements for that. So those are some of the questions that I think you guys should think about. And I think for the most part, short-term rental owners have less traffic and are a benefit over long-term rental. So thanks for listening.
Huh? Never mind. We were on to opponent.
Yeah.
That's what I said, I thought. That's what I said, sorry, maybe also wants to speak as an opponent. Then next steps to close the public hearing. All in favor? Discussion board?
I got a couple of questions. So somebody running a non-licensed short-term rental, what are the options for shutting that down for real estate?
So like I think we've talked about before, code enforcement with a lot of pieces in our land development regulations, not just SDRs are a little bit challenging. We don't necessarily have a lot of teeth that we as in planning and development and even portions of the county can do a whole lot about. And I'm just being honest. So we have a, our violation process is we send a notification letter to let people know. And again, this can be any violation that we observe or that's reported on that we confirm. You know, by the way, you need a, you need a license for this. We noticed that you're generally there and he'll find that they're advertising and we don't have a license. So he'll send a letter. He'll contact them in some way. Usually it's a letter. We call it a friendly letter, the notification letter. We noticed that you are advertising a short-term rental. We do not have record of a license. You need a license and he'll reference the code section that talks about licenses required and, and all of that and the process to obtain one. Like with all of our violation process, we give timeframes for people to respond, people to either respond to us or submit their license paperwork. If they don't respond or submit their license within that timeframe, we move on to a formal notice of violation letter where it's a little bit more, a little bit more specific as, okay, you've received your friendly letter. We have not heard from you. This is now escalated to a notice of violation. You need to contact this office or submit your license within X days. If we do not hear from them, they do not submit their license, we do a final notice of violation, same kind of idea. And if we don't hear from them, then it goes to request, request for prosecution to our county councilor's office. Again, this is how our violation process works. The county councilor's office would then go before the judge to basically get them to agree and say, yes, this is a violation. And then they can impose what we can't impose, like they can impose fines, they can impose, you know, whatever else they would deem necessary that again, we don't have the authority to do to compel somebody to get their license. In terms of revoking a license, if people have two or more violations in any given, given twelve months, we would have the authority to revoke a license in terms of actually, the problem becomes actually shutting them down. We can revoke their license. Unfortunately, as you folks can imagine, we can revoke a license. We haven't had to do it, but we can also continually con, contact people and say, you need a license or you need to renew or you need this. And if they ignore us, they continue to operate and there's not much we can do, we as in planning and development can do to basically shut down a unit. We would need the courts to help us with that.
Other one I had was for, on their road, they all cars are gone there. What they're blocking our access, emergency access.
Yeah, so that would be, that would be calling, calling the RCPD for that. Yeah. We do require one parking spot per bedroom to be on-site. Now, if you have a two-bedroom unit, and I'm just using, using numbers, this, I'm not referring to anybody in particular. If you have a two-bedroom, that means two parking units on-site. That does not prevent people from parking on public streets as long as you have those two conforming parking spots on your property or three, however many bedrooms you have, that you have the matching number of parking spots on your property, that doesn't mean. That doesn't mean you can't park on a public street, if they.
The short-term rental rules said that you weren't allowed to park on the street.
No, you have to have onsite parking. But, but we can't, we can't, yeah, we can't prevent folks from parking on the street.
Just the mood in general, I mean. Just in Manhattan, I mean. The, the big New York City venture capital money that's coming into this area for speculation and. Is insane, just insane, and I, I'm like kind of shocked at. The, the, the international conglomerates have now come to deer lane and we've got problems there. What can we do, obviously we're not doing something that prevents the problem on their street. And if there's a problem on that street, it could happen on another street somewhere else.
Yeah, um, the biggest thing that really it's the state that's gonna have to do this for us. And this is something we've been working with our legislature for a couple of years and we're, we're keeping at it because it's a slow process and we don't know if it's gonna go anywhere in the state. Um, we need the state to help us with enforcement, we need them to define what RCPD can do. We need them to, again, define and help us with enforcement, because the reality is, the state needs to give us more enforcement ability.
The right to have stricter laws in its county than the rest of the state. So this is a Riley County problem, what can, what can we get?
Right.
Because the state does not authorize local entities to do certain things.
Right.
And with L authority do certain.
And that's the.
That's the problem, that's why the.
Well, Riley County, Emily County can put up no parking signs if it's not conducive to no law, you know.
But, but you don't enforce it so much, this, this is a bug we can't.
And to that I can speak, I live the lake, I sympathize, I have a neighbor, our boat in the street. It's been there for four months, nobody will be able to live it, nobody gets on it, all over. So I sympathize because it's difficult to get things done when. You know, township trustees, call, we have to talk to them, call.
Call your legislature.
Talk to anyone that'll listen, come together as a group, that's great, let's just guys come together as a group. Problem with the road, you guys are in township, you're on kind of a fortive, the only main man today at the Bay of there. Uh, but your township doesn't part of the containment, so we pay back for that. We can regulate, but we can't really penalize, so it's.
It's like a shark with no teeth, I mean, we can be, we can be the, the highly greatest shark with the greatest prohibitions. With no teeth.
Right. Yeah, luckily, luckily a majority, I, I, I will be careful with my words, a majority of folks. And again, this isn't just short-term rentals, this is our land development regulations as a whole, luckily, the majority of folks will follow the rules. Some people just don't know, some people don't know that you need a building permit, you know, that, that happens, and so Darren finds something, sends them a letter. Oh, I didn't know, and they submit their building permit and they go on their way. Most people do follow the rules luckily, but unfortunately, we do have that handful with a variety of things that don't. And that's why a lot of our regulations are written, um, but yeah, really at the end of the day, if people push on us, there's not much we can do. In planning development, we need the courts to help us with that now, and really, again, ultimately, we need the state. To really help define, and, and again, that's violations as a whole, we do have a senate bill for certain cleanup efforts, but that doesn't apply to. Not getting a building permit or not getting a license or, so that stuff needs to be defined by the state and help us out with that. And as Eric said, that's statewide, it's not just Riley County.
The process for filing a complaint, uh, second.
You can, you can do that online, you can give, um, our office a call and talk to Darren, um, you can come visit us. Um, yeah, so, so anyway, we, again, there's multiple ways folks can do that.
And it, it doesn't say that for sure, that's why, doesn't fully address violations in the boroughs here.
Okay, we can, we can look at that, make sure people are aware of what, what to do, for sure. But I will say Darren's really good at keeping an eye on things, he does scour Airbnb, VRBO and. I don't know if there's other ones that he looks at, um, but of course, those are the big ones, he'll look at those and make sure, and, and he has found. A good amount advertised that we don't have licenses for and he will follow up, so he is pretty good at finding things. Um, and making sure people are aware, so I will say that.
Four possible motions listed in the stack report.
I'd like to make a motion. I will make the motion for a recognition of a refusal to the board of county commissioners, or, uh, board of the county, the rally county. For the proposed amendments to Raleigh County Land Development regulations.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, so the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board will hold their own public hearing on this on November third, right, I have that date right, looking at Lisa or Bob. Um, six P M. at city, city hall, if anybody, if you, I mean, you, you're certainly welcome to, you don't have to, but you're certainly welcome to come again. Um, it's the same information that we'll give to them, but we do have to run it by both planning boards. And then the commissioners will, uh, make their final determination. At this point, there isn't a date set with the board of county commissioners because we wanted to get, you have one? Yeah, because we, that's, yeah, we have other things we're doing, because we wanted to hear from you folks. At this public hearing and then at the next public hearing to see if there are any changes that needed to be, um, proposed, so. Um, Lisa, on the sign-in sheet, are there room for email addresses?
I don't know.
Um, so I, we wanna keep you folks aware of when the board is going to, um, hear that. Some of you I have email addresses for, like Steve and I believe Mr. Wertz, I have yours. If you want to, um, write your email address on the sheet, if there's not a space for it, you can just flip it over, hope that's okay.
And some of them have already gone through variances on their own properties. Um, and so I know most everybody's sitting back there.
Okay, okay, because yeah, I would wanna make sure to keep everybody here informed about the next step, so.
And Mark does have a license.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll be able to get your contact, yep. Yeah. Okay, so apologies, I don't have a memo in your, um, uh, in your packet. Um, but just real quick, I just wanna give you some dates, um, we're getting close to getting the comprehensive plan update done. Um, so you folks will workshop it at your next meeting in, uh, November, November tenth, um, is your, is your next meeting. And we will workshop, um, the draft comprehensive plan, um. We should be getting it from Stan Tech at the end of this week, that is what they have promised us, we have a meeting with them tomorrow to make sure everything is on track. Um, Bob and I are gonna go through it, but likely we'll get it on our website and let everybody know, so you can look at it early, so we're not, you're not just. Getting it, you know, a week, week before your, your meeting, but again, workshop with you folks, November tenth. We're gonna have a community workshop at Potter Hall on November twelfth, that'll be at six P M., six to eight P M., there at Potter Hall. Or we'll, um, present it to the community, and then the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board will have their own work session on November seventeenth. Pending all of that, um, December one, the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board will have their public hearing. You folks will have your public hearing on December eighth or December meeting, and then the following week, it will be, um. Hopefully adopted by the board of county commissioners, um, they really wanted it done, um, and that was always the intention to have it done before. Or by the end of the year, basically, so we're a little crunched in there, but we can do it, we get it, get it done, um. So yeah, I'll just keep you folks surprised when we get the draft and other information, if you wanna peek at it early, um, you'll be able to do that. And then as always, just let Bob or I know if you have any questions or you wanna chat about it, or there's anything you wanna, specific you wanna look at or dive into, just let us know. So, any questions or? Thank you.
All in favor? And start on the dialogue. You guys.